One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening. We don't have everyone here, we do have a forum. Henry's not gonna make it and Joseph is not gonna make it, but we have the rest of the councilmen here today. First item on the agenda, or the next item on the agenda, is the consent agenda. And I believe all that we had in there was the minutes, the April minutes, and hopefully you have a chance to look at that, read it over. At this time, if there's anything that needs to be added, or taken off, or if everything looks the way it should be, I will entertain a motion.
I think a motion to accept them.
Motion made by Ethan to accept them the way they were presented, seconded by Saul. All those in favor, motion passing now. Next item on the agenda is the public comment, anyone wishing to address the board? Is it just L.A.?
Yes, L.A.
Okay.
I remember last month I complained about the speed on Second Street. But on the fourteenth, the city marshal came up there and sat on that street. After he left, I came down here, in front of the city manager. I asked him why he flashed his lights, he said there was two or three going twenty-five. Isn't that right, isn't that what he said? No tickets. Twenty-five miles an hour. You're gonna move, speeding up it up? Doesn't do any good, complain. Apparently, because the speed is, and the car is getting worse, because everybody moved off speed bumps, they're coming up that street. But when a man sits there and watches them, see them speeding and flashes his lights. That's not right.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else that's?
No, that hit first.
Okay. Alright. Next item on the agenda is the, any presentations, and we don't have any of those, correct? So, I'll go to the agenda item number five, and that's the proclamation, and I think we're only gonna be doing one. And that is the first one, and that's the National Public Works Week Proclamation. And, I get to read this? Okay, I do want to read it, can you read it? I can read it, thank you. Alright, this is National Public Works Week Proclamation, May eighteen through twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The people, purpose, and presence. Whereas public works professionals focus on the infrastructure, facility, and services that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resident communities and public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Stockdale, Texas, and whereas these infrastructures, infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures, and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public's, in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Stockdale, to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year twenty twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, being now resolved, I, Sal Yermauson Jr., do hereby designate the week of May eighteen through twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, as the National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions that they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. And whereas whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the still of the state to be a fix, done at the city of Stockdale, Texas, this fifth day of May twenty twenty-five. Thank you all. Is there anything else on that?
I want to get over to tacos too.
Thank you all very much, for all your efforts.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Me too.
Next item on the agenda is old business. That's discussion and action to approve changing the water meters to a fixed base meter reading.
So, this was on the last agenda, going back over. I was requested to look into some additional cost of slug removal. There's not a lot of companies out there that do this type of work. I did get one quote, but it's up around the cost of the whole project for just a slug removal. It's two hundred thousand.
I'm sorry, for just what?
For just the slug removal.
Okay.
Part that they gave me a quote for was right around the two million dollar mark for just the slug removal.
Bullshit.
So, it, you know, we do have the one for the slug removal and AMR, AMI meter reads, which is right about that same price for the whole project. So, bringing this back for consideration. This has been brought up by multiple people within the community, council members, about a way of moving to, in a direction to where citizens can get notified in a timely manner when they get a leak. So, this, this one also has the remote turnoff system. So, if you have a leak in the middle of the night, or two in the morning, you can log into your own account and turn your water off from your computer. That way, it keeps you from having to call out somebody after hours, or wait until somebody gets there to help assist with turning off the water or things like that. It also helps us in the office, so that when we do disconnects or anything like that, we don't have to have people go to each house individually and have equipment, man hours, vehicle hours, you know, things like that. So, there again, I'm just bringing this back, there was a breakdown on how the whole project pretty much pays for itself over the revenue loss from old meters, things like that.
So, is the four thirty-eight, the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand through?
No, so that one was the first one we had looked at, but this one is just fixed base, this does not offer the disconnect or anything like that, and this was the original one we looked at, it does not offer turnoff, and this does not include the, you know, the lagoon.
Okay, so what's the total on that one? On the one that we're looking at tonight?
Second page. Second page shows the breakdown on costs there. And it was the two, two point two million, the two, two million, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and seven hundred and seventy-six dollars for the total project.
And, and the, the, what is the yearly, I mean, the monthly or yearly payment?
So, we're working on that currently, I have sixty-five thousand in the budget here for meters. Remember, this is two projects that we're looking at. If you're only looking at the portion of the meters, we can, we can pay that out of just what's currently funded. The only money we're gonna have to come up with is roughly another hundred thousand dollars a year for the wastewater side. We do have that, we can, well, we can fund that through the wastewater currently. So, I won't have the final numbers until we get the funding, but it's gonna be right around about four to five percent interest.
Four to five percent, that would be my next question. And is it a twenty-year?
It's a thirty-year.
Thirty years, so we've been?
They had a breakdown where we could do it as low as fifteen-year, but if we span it out that thirty-year, it's in the budget.
Okay. And how, how long are these projected to last? The meters themselves, are they, do they have a thirty-year life?
They have a twenty-five-year one.
Twenty-five.
But there again, we're also budgeting a project that hasn't been done ever in the wastewater plant, you know, that's a forty, fifty-year project that is now coming to life.
Okay.
And that third page, I believe it is, shows the pond number one is sixty-four point four percent full, the second pond is thirty-seven point one percent full, and pond number three is forty percent full, so when you kind of look at it as a whole, our capacity of the wastewater plant is basically fifty percent.
Okay, so is this two different companies that are?
It's all one.
All, all of one?
Yeah.
So? Yeah, so, and so, how long will it take for them to do everything? Are they gonna have different people doing different things?
There'll be different crews doing different things, the wastewater side will be one crew, and then the meter changeout will be another crew.
And I know, I know this question you've already asked it once, but is it, is it eight hundred and fifty meters?
There's seven hundred and eighty, I believe it is.
So, are we only getting enough to replace, and then any extras we're gonna?
We're doing all, all of the meters.
Okay, but are we, does this include any extras, like if that subdivision comes online?
It would not.
We're gonna have to purchase those?
Those are purchased usually.
Through the developer?
That's to the developer, or homeowner.
Okay.
Yeah, those are part of the meters that you.
Okay. Any other questions? I can't think of any other questions. I guess, I guess the one thought I have is, do you feel very comfortable on the, on the money, the budget part?
Yes.
I know one of the things that we had talked about was looking at the budget and getting a little more information from you before we make such a big commitment, but I know also that these things need to take place in a timely manner, and I know our budget isn't, we don't blow the budget until, what month, is that August?
Well, probably in August.
Okay.
Like I said, the water side, the meter side is a hundred percent funded in the current budget. If we just cookie cutter that same amount every year, it will pay for that portion of the project.
Over thirty years?
Yes, because of the fact that it, this includes everything, the valves are gonna be replaced, the boxes, meters, everything is turnkeyed.
So, so that fifty thousand that's budgeted there, what other expenses come out of that? What, what are we gonna be using that fifty thousand for now that would have been used for something else?
It's, it's specifically for meters.
So, in years past, that fifty, the fifty thousand was used to upgrade and repair, is, is that the case?
I'm not sure, years past, I just, that's what was there, there was, well, I'm sorry, there was thirty thousand when I got here. Remember, we didn't, when I got here, we didn't spend anything, because we didn't know where our reconciliation's at, so we didn't spend any crazy end-of-year money. So, going this year, we had some other budgetary items that were going, dropping off, because we weren't gonna use them anymore. So, it's that money rolling here, and because we knew that we needed a meter changeout program, whether it's this one or some other one, and that's why I put in the fifty thousand. Didn't change the last year's budget from this year's budget any, we just moved money around to get that fifty thousand. I have another fifteen thousand that was set for just the meter dials, the heads of them, not the pots. Because some meters may be brand-new, or newer, and they just needed the new AMI head to be compatible with the new fixed base. So, I had another fifteen thousand budgeted for that. Going back, I don't believe the thirty thousand that was there and the fifty thousand for the heads was used in past years. I'm not sure, you know, what happened, it may have just still been sitting there at the end of the year. I could go back and really dig and find out, you know.
So, I guess what I'm, the biggest thought of mine is, does that, does that line item, does it generate fifty thousand a year? Are we gonna be constantly trying to get money from other places?
It does generate the money because of the fact that your meter, your water meters are your cash register. That's what we sell is water.
Okay.
You know, we base our, cost of our wastewater off how much water it might use, so it is the cash register of the city.
Okay. And, and I'm not asking these questions, because I doubt, too, I'm asking these questions so everyone knows this is my first go-around with this budget, so, you know, I, I can't remember from last year, because I wasn't here. So, any, any other questions? There is a, yeah, thank you. So, so if, if the council approves this tonight, will they, is it something they'll start right away?
I have most of the paperwork started for government capital, which is the funding, and then we would move through that, which we would get the, secure the funding, and then move forward with the project. Of course, the contractor would have to secure boxes, meters, all of that. Timeframe, I did not tell you, I would hope within thirty days they would be able to secure everything. I don't foresee any, you know, supply chain issues right now.
Yeah.
And then, just over another thirty days for a full changeout.
Alright, are we in a time crunch, or is this something that you feel we need to get going really quick?
The sooner the better, yeah. Currently, we have, what, I would say a hundred and thirty meters that do not pick up.
Okay.
So, they're manually.
So, the reason? Okay.
Two hundred, last time I read, two, and some of them may be gas, but probably about two hundred and forty. I think we're under that level.
I think total water, on the water side is a hundred and forty, is what I think.
Now your water, now your water loss is up, you know, so.
Alright, the only reason I, I don't wanna postpone it, just postpone it, but I, I know, just in talking to some of the councilmen, that, you know, getting a, a big picture of, of a budget would be a lot easier on them, but those are just, you know, thoughts. If there isn't any other questions, I will entertain a motion and see how the motion goes. Our conversation. Y'all wanna, y'all wanna wait a little bit, or y'all wanna move forward?
We can say it again, and if y'all need more information, it's up to y'all.
So, I don't, just me, from what I'm hearing, what, just in the last couple of meetings, not so much the information just on this line item, because I don't think that's where our biggest concern, we know the pond, we know the water meter situation, and that's something we need to fix and we wanna fix. Our concerns are just overall, you know, we, there's a lot of, of things that are needed, and it's, it's, it's just one that we need to hit first. It, it sounds to me, just on my part, you know, after what Chelsea just said, you know, it's something that would generate a little more money and we'd get paid for all the water that's going out, so I can see the need. But I know everyone needs to feel comfortable about it.
Not only would we be saving the, or recouping that money that we're losing currently on water loss and things like that, we would also be saving on man hours it takes to read, currently it takes, what, four days, three people pretty much to do meter reading? And then you have to come back and, some of those, since they're manually read, is that a, a two there, or is that a three?
Four meters.
You have to go back out and send another guy out to the same location, that's another trip in a vehicle, and whether you lost again, you know, in man hours, to pick up that reading, so.
Okay. Alright, once again, I'll entertain a motion, and if y'all want to table it, just make that motion, or if y'all feel comfortable enough.
I'm, I'm good with water, it's, it's that part about the wastewater, you said we'll be able to find ten grand a month, or it's gonna be like eight grand a month.
Yeah, so currently, we do have some items in the wastewater budget that we haven't touched. So, we do have money in the wastewater budget. The big thing is getting through this year, which we're over halfway through, and then we can sit down and budget for the next year. That one. It's a little easier going into a year when you know what you're gonna spend, as opposed to going halfway through a year and saying, hey, we wanna do this project now, and we didn't really budget for it. But I do believe, by the time you finish out the paperwork and get everything going, we're really only gonna have like three months of payments in this budget, if that.
And then, was it the TCQ that we're, we're working on timeline with them as well for the sewer?
Yeah, we just had an inspection last month, I believe it was, so there were some items in there, and this is one of the items they gave, bring up, so.
Okay. I'll entertain the motion, if not, it'll, it'll die just for lack of motion. Anyone?
I'll make the motion before, but.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, make the motion before, with a second.
Okay. Motion made to, to go with it, seconded by, made by Ethan, seconded by Saul. All those in favor? Motion passed. Alright. We want to hear about it.
I know about everything along that, but I'm just moving forward.
Anything else on that? We're good on that one. Okay. Let's move on to the next agenda item, that's new business. The first one on A is discussion and action to approve new fire inspection fees. You should have had that in your, in your notes also?
So, this is adopting the fees, most of these fees are currently in line with what we charge. The only, and I worked with Wilson County to make sure that, that they are in line with what we're currently charging. In fact, they brought down the annual fire inspection, they normally charge seventy-five for that, but since we always charge fifty-four, they, they brought these numbers down to accommodate the city. They currently do all of the fire inspections and, and review for the county and the city of Forestville. This is just kind of cookie cuttering what they do for the city of Forestville and the county, and it allows us to utilize the people that are gonna, that are gonna be doing the firefighting that may come out of an improperly inspected building. So, they are, they're gonna be the one really looking at it to make sure that it's passing fire inspections, because they don't wanna be back out there fighting the fires. Currently, we've been utilizing Edwin Baker as our fire inspector. There's a couple issues, one is our personnel policy states that somebody must, to be a part-time or be considered a city employee, must be working fifteen hours a week minimum. He does not fall under that. There is really no way to pick up the extra time to make it that, so we either have to go to a contract or, you know, let him go as an employee, so it's either we can go to a contract with him, or we can go this route with the Wilson County. Like I said, they accommodated us on a couple items that we charge less on currently, so that we don't have to go up to our citizens and say, you're now gonna spend seventy-five dollars for a fire inspection, as opposed to we've always charged you. So, they have worked with us to accommodate certain areas.
Does everyone do the same, all the same stuff as what's in here?
So, going through our fire inspection reports, there's a lot of things that need to be re-looked at, I get to say. Where it's always just been cookie cutter, the same thing for same places every year. Even though, let's say, let's take for instance, down here on the corner, the tire shop that's there on the corner across from where they're building that Uncle Patty's. So, that place has continued to get charged, you know, let's say for the tires, even though they don't, tires are, because there's a fee in there for, you know, for your tire repair and things like that, because they had to inspect to make sure, you know, because they're the fire facility, the house's tires, a totally different fire. So, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be reevaluated from the current system, and the Wilson County is looking to do that, so.
So, currently, yes, we want, does not have, we're ready to fight the fire inspection. Plan and review, fire plan and review, and the county is looking to go into this.
So, did you say?
It just recently lost its.
So, did you say an option is to contract with everyone?
We can do that.
Would, would it, would it cost the city the same, or being that it's contracted, would it be different?
It would be different.
More?
We would have to look at that, but probably.
So, tonight, you're just wanting to approve fees, not necessarily who's doing the inspection, is that correct?
Just approve these fees going forward.
Alright, is there any questions on the fees? I'm pretty sure we're gonna be talking about who's doing that at a later date, yeah?
The fees are on the rest of the county?
These are in line, except for a couple that we tweaked because of the?
Or our benefit?
Yes.
The, that are previous. Motion made by Jeff, they're here second.
Second.
Seconded by Ethan, all those in favor, motion passing now this length. Next item on the agenda is discussion and action to approve the pool cash account.
So, this has been brought up by our auditor, let me, just a second. If you look in your packet, there's a that's under I and B. So, the auditor has recommended us to go to a pool cash, currently we have, was it fourteen accounting? Nineteen accounting, sorry. And if, let's say, for instance, we're gonna do some street repairs, it's gonna come out of our street money that's in the account. Currently, I would have to go down and say, well, we believe we're gonna spend ten grand on the street repair. Have to go and take, physically go down, take the ten thousand out of that account, move it to our disbursement fund, just so that we'll be able to cut a check. The pool cash basically puts every, all the money in one account, and allows us to separate it inside the Ncode software. So, Ncode says, you know, streets has claimed to, you know, four hundred thousand dollars over here, the water department has claimed to this much money, and it's, it breaks it up that way and, and holds that money for each account. But it makes it much easier when we go to distribute a check, we don't have to physically go and move those monies around from one account to another. There is some accounts out of those that will not change. One would be like our Phelps account, because that's a trust, in trust of us, it's not really our account. Any accounts that are. Any accounts that are true city accounts would move to this pool cash.
So, move it all to one big account electronically and then it disperses to the other accounts? It's quicker?
You create subaccounts?
Yeah.
And then you name each subaccount, like that it knows when you're just making, when I'm paying the check, it hits a like key mark now? Without having to physically go to the bank and, throw all the money from the savings and transfer it and then deposit it into the disbursement fund?
Even when you cut a PO for a project, it's gonna show that money incurred from that account because you're coding it to that account. Makes it much simpler, more streamlined. When you go to, currently, it's a little bit of a nightmare when you're trying to reconcile accounts or doing the reports for the auditor. This way, you'll generate all the reports and all the money senses tracked in the account. It's all much easier to show at the end of the year for the auditor.
I have a question.
You're good. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to go forward with it.
Motion made by Ethan. Here, second. Second by Saul. All those in favor? Motion passing unanimously. Next item on the agenda is agenda item C, and that's discussion and action to approve the repair of Cemetery Road with millions not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
So, I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with the Cemetery Road where it comes back up. There's a pretty large dip there where it meets the current asphalt. And I don't, have y'all been able to go by and see the road by the park? So, it's the same company I got with them to put the millions. They're gonna come back and oil that. They're gonna put hot asphalt over top of it and then roll it again. They're waiting on the rain to get out of here to do that. But I talked to him about possibly doing the same on that street down to, about where the monument company is, back into the asphalt. He gave me a price of thirty thousand. But he did say, if we do that project, he would do the parking lot for the splash pad in front. He would throw that in. We had talked, I think we had, last time when we had talked about it, that alone was fifteen twenty thousand. So, you know, I think we'd be getting a good bang for our buck if we did this and they wouldn't quit the splash pad parking lot.
Do you remember offhand how many square feet the parking lot was gonna be?
Just roughly. I just remember it was like around fifteen to twenty thousand.
The total cost?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, any questions?
I don't sound good. How does that line up with anybody else's? Do you have any other numbers from anyone?
I have not. The other prices I was looking at were chip seals and they are different. It's not apples to apples, so, you know. I was trying to take advantage of, one of the biggest parts of a project is mobilization. This, this would be tied into an existing project, so mobilization is going away. So, you know, moving the equipment here, getting the equipment here, getting the workforce here, when already here doing the project, gives you a lot of savings.
So, I took C thirty thousand, but you could try to get more for this. I see what you're saying about mobilization, but C, just to confirm.
Go ahead. Alright, any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion. Motion made by Jeff. Here, second. Second by Saul. All those in favor? Motion passing unanimously. Next item is item D, discussion and action to approve the gas odorant, odorant, gas skid not exceeding a hundred and forty thousand.
So, I'm bringing this back sometime before I got here. Council had voted on it past to replace the gas odorant out to get out there. And talking with the contractor that was originally contacted for this, the amount that was approved was right around thirty-five thousand. Talking to him, he said, I can do it for that, but I have to have engineered plans to go off of. So, once we started looking at engineered plans and other vendors having to get in, well, the price is now at the hundred and forty thousand dollar mark. So, there again, this is up to council. I think the gas odorant skid we have out there is probably thirty years old.
Older than that?
You know.
It's older than that?
It's, it's not up to date. The new one would have, you know, all the bell, new modern bells and whistles to, when it's running low, if there's leaks, things like that. Currently, we have a leak system which really doesn't go off of flow, whereas the new one would go off of a flow, an actual flow meter there. That would also help us keep track of what we're purchasing because we don't have our own meter. Enterprise has their meter and they say, well, this is how much we sent y'all, but we really don't have any way of verifying that because we do not have a meter on our own. So, this would also include a meter.
Can you talk about a meter? Is it a physical meter downstream of theirs or you tapped it into their meter?
It would be downstream of there from our pay point. So, their meter is right before our pay point. And they say this is, and of course, they give us, you know, all the calibration records and everything, so, you know, hard to go off and say, you're wrong, but if something does happen to that meter, we would have a backup, which currently we do not. And therefore, you know, going forward, we have a much more modernized entry point. I'm not sure if y'all been out there, but it looks the same as it did four years ago, probably. Has not changed one bit.
How do we pick this one?
This would come out of the gas fund, the budgeting gas fund.
Is it just giving the engineer a hundred and ten thousand dollars? Is he doing the work for thirty?
No, because the thirty was basically just the welding portion. So, I'm not sure, of course, I wasn't here at that time, but previously, they had gone to this contractor and said, how much would it be to put a new skid in here? After talking to him, the amount, he told him was cutting out what's existing and putting the skid in and welding it in. That didn't include the vendor who's supplying the skid or the engineering companies that go along with engineering that skid. So, you know, the thirty, thirty-five thousand was just the number that they had gotten to basically install it. But that was what was, going back and looking at minutes that was voted on and approved probably around April of last year.
Probably what they did do, they probably found out it would be a lot more. Put it on the back burner.
So, talk about cutting out all, what are we gonna do during that downtime? Do we need a plan for?
So, we would have to bring in a tractor trailer tanker like we did when they were doing the maintenance, but we're only talking about maybe a week as opposed to three months.
So, is that cost bigger than here?
That is not, but that, that's gonna offset, not all of it, but a big portion of that's gonna offset with the gas.
Gas that goes through it.
Yeah, because we're not gonna be purchasing from, the enterprise will be purchasing from them.
Alright, any other questions?
You good over there?
Ethan, go ahead, sir. Alright, if there is any other questions, I will entertain a motion. Make a motion, Saul, make some motions, go with it as presented. Here, second, second by Ethan. This one, both in favor? Motion passing unanimously. The next one, man, these numbers just keep on getting bigger and bigger. Discussion and action to approve the new installation of the water tank system not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So, this one I'm bringing in front of council. When I first got here, we were, one of our biggest issues was water. Currently, we backwash right about five million gallons of water a year, thrown away, straight to the sewer system. This would allow us to recoup that water and the engineers looking at ninety-nine percent of it recouped. It would be a system where we would backwash, do a tank, let it settle in the tank. We could heat it and pull off at different levels and only leave the iron in the very bottom. Once we get to that point, you would dump that little bit of water with the iron in it to the sewer system as opposed to all the clean water that we settle out in the top. That water that's clean would go back into our raw water line coming straight from our wells. If you look at costs to gallons, it's not like the three hundred and fifty thousand that we're spending on a rehab of a well. I can say that. It's a small amount compared to the same amount that we're spending for the what, the rehab of a well when you're looking at dollars per gallon. But this does not take in consideration of any future growth. Currently, if we're using five million gallons, if we have future growth, we're gonna have to up that because more gallons that you flow through the filters, the more often you're gonna have to backwash. So, that brings up that number. So, I talked to Ethan, he wanted a payback of, just a quick, off the top of my head, real quick, we were looking at about fifteen thousand a year back, and that's about all you're gonna get. That's the fact that you don't have as much chlorine going out because it's chlorinated water going back into your lines, so you save your chlorine and treatment costs. That also includes the roughly fourteen homes that it would supply water to on a monthly basis. So, and that's just going off of the national average of two point five, you know, if you have more or less and the, going off of the base rate that we currently have. Of course, five years from now, that base rate's gonna go up and the savings will be even more. But currently, you know, that's what we said.
Maybe twenty-five years?
To rehab? Yeah. And that's that current flow rate and current cost. Another thing, this is totally up to y'all. We can table this or do away with it and just look at putting it into a project. We currently have two projects on the list with Texas Water Development Board. We're two hundred and fifty on the list out of about three hundred. So, we don't look real good on getting any funds, but if we roll this into those two projects, it gives us a green or recoup of energy. So, we bump up on that same list. We won't be going over two fifty. We're hoping to be around the hundred and fifty mark. So, when the funding every year comes in, we're at least top of the, you know, categories to get that funding for those projects. That's, to me, that's where I see this going and the best place, but it's totally up to council. We do, I have talked to the Evergreen. They will, they will write a letter of recommendation for the project for any grants that we want to go after because it is a savings to the water that we currently get. And this is water that we're currently allocated, that we're pulled out of the ground, you know, we pay for pumping, we pay for treatment, that we're just dumping.
You don't feel like there's a time crunch on this one, do you?
No, I mean, we've been going for years like this. Like I said, I wanted to bring it to council for y'all's approval, what y'all think. Me personally, I think it would be best to roll it into the two projects that we have currently and hopefully make those look a little bit better when we go for grants for and funding.
I will entertain a motion. Is there isn't any other questions? Jeff kind of whispered in my ear, but I will entertain a motion to table this item. Motion made by Jeff to table the item for the meeting. Here, second. Second by Saul. All those in favor? Motion passes, we'll table this one. Alright, the next item on the agenda is to go into closed session. Is that all that we needed to do right now and then we'll come out in closed session?
Unless y'all want to move Jennifer's report so that she doesn't have to stay a long time if we're in closed session a long time?
We'll go ahead and move, before we go into closed session, we'll go into the staff reports and we'll go ahead and allow this time for Jennifer to give her a call.
Little update. Okay, the pond, we're about ninety-five percent done. They're gonna come back probably next week and oil the road. I think Stephen is gonna work on the fountain, getting that back up and running. Did you get the stuff this weekend? Okay. And then I, they went, the city went and got a platform, one of those like, what you call a platform, a floating deck I bought, and we're gonna build in the middle of the new pond for a habitat for all the ducks because the ducks are roaming town. And not saying it's gonna eliminate it, but we're at least showing that an effort to create them a home. And Roy Lynn has volunteered to build a frame on it and then Pioneer Wood Company out of Laverne has donated the wood. I want it to look really cool. I think the kids will enjoy it. So, I'm working on that project right now. And that's pretty much with the pond project. I think we're pretty much gonna wrap that up. And now I moved to the two point four acre apartments. Survey is completed. The real estate contract and the new restrictions are at the city attorney's for review and approval, and then we can move forward with it. She calls me every day, the apartment lady, she's ready. So, I think she'll move pretty quickly. Of course, she'll go into engineering on that.
Where is that?
The two point four where the old record yard used to be. So, that was y'all's property, you're moving it into mine, then I'm working the, I guess, the apartment deal, the EDC is. And so, allowing us to put the restrictions on there, that will safeguard us and for that, that development to turn into Section Eight, EDC can do that and throw those restrictions into the deed. So, per the city attorney, recommended it going this route instead of going through y'all.
Do you have any plans with the apartments or anything like that? Same thing like that?
Yeah. She showed us the slideshow, but it was pretty meat and potato. And she keeps telling me that until we finish this part, then she'll start on the engineering, which our subdivision already has restrictions. It's gotta be eighty percent stucco. There's a lot that's already been there, so it will be that. But I'll make sure that I keep you involved with that.
It'll be two story, one story?
She's gonna go up. So, some will be townhomes and some will be apartments.
How many units are we gonna?
Up to thirty. And some of those, like the townhomes, she's wanting to sell the townhomes. Now, it will be on an HOA, so the dirt will never be sold. Kind of, it will remain, and if that HOA ever is dissolved, then the EDC or the city will take over that HOA. So, we'll always have some control of what is going on with that. And I think that's super big. That's why we're doing this, so we can always manage to, you know, when you get these investors that come out of state, it worries me. You know, they, they're, they're just investors, making a development and then selling it off, and then we don't have any control, very little. Now we will. We will always be able to control what happens there. And so, I should get that document tomorrow afternoon from the city attorney. I sent my recommendations and so Stephen's been helping me with it, so we're working together and we'll let y'all see those as soon as we get them back with her recommendations. So, we're, we're moving right along with that. And then the subdivision, I ordered an appraisal on that eight acres per the city attorney and a survey appraisal has been done. It came back at thirty-two five an acre. So, we're right, right on target for that, and the survey should be done this week. So, as soon as I get those two, one item left, and then I'll work with Jeff, the developer- So, as soon as I get those two, or one item left, and then I'll work with Jeff, the developer, and we'll start moving forward on that. And he seems anxious to, to continue to move forward. That will be...
Is he waiting to sign a contract on that, or is, so there's not a contract signed yet?
No, no, not until the survey and the appraisal got done, and so that should be done this week. I'm waiting on that one and then the soccer field one, because we're giving you all the two something acres where the soccer field's going to go, so those will both be done this week. Any questions?
Anything, any update on moving that dirt up over the church? Are we going to clear out some area?
We already did, behind the church, the twelve acres? Yeah, it's done. Yeah, it looks really nice, y'all go drive by there, it's so much better, yeah, yeah,
And that ninety-five percent complete, maybe you've been talking to Stephen about it, the dirt work on that, on that road, I saw the tenant about, you know, raining, stuff's getting out there on the road, they have plans for some type of a road control?
We talked about that, I think this...
So, we have, I, I've had the parks guy go over for one and seed that hill this last week, so hopefully we'll get some grass growing on it to help that, and then we'll do the cleanup.
And are you talking about what's ending up in the road?
Yes. Wyatt's, he is going to be cleaning up out of Miami.
He's got a little work to touch up there.
Yeah.
It looks good, just the rain.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, I agree.
The, the big hill dirt that's still there at the end of the, the first part of the pond, are y'all still trying to get rid of that, or is that about where y'all want it?
I wouldn't mind a foot or two off, and, and I'm sure that will come, I mean, I don't mind the hill, I, I mean, I think it's better, I do like the idea of an amphitheater up on top, and, you know, something like that, but where, where do you feel?
Well, like I was, I was telling you, like, right after the school got their dirt off of it, about that height, I think was nice, of course, we added something to it since then, but I don't think we'd have a problem, you know, over getting rid of some of it.
I think it looks overwhelming, because there's no grass on it. As soon as we get grass on it, I think it'll, it'll be nice to have that little hill up there, and then put a pavilion of some sort, where you can do parties, you know, it's pretty up there, have you walked up there?
I haven't.
Yeah, it's pretty. Well, and, and it will be better once there's grass on it, so I, I think we could lose a foot or two or three, it would hurt, so if somebody needs it, you know, take some more off, it's up to y'all.
It's beneficial having for the city, because when they need, because when you put the soccer field on the other side, you're going to lose most of your, of your sand. This will be where they can go in after they replace the water line, they can put that dirt in.
Well, at some point, you want to stop digging.
Right now, when he asked if it had grass on it, if we keep on, take off of the grass, it's never going to come up.
I agree, some, at some point, we need to stop.
I know they're talking about a, a couple of cross-country meets there, and they were asking if they could use that hill, run up and go down around the pond.
Yeah.
And all I told them was, I think they're getting rid of some of the, the dirt still, so they were hoping that the dirt...
Well, the fire department took some, I let them have some, unless I get somebody calling.
Right now, we haven't, we're, we're done with giving it away unless somebody is listening, that we're fine.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a couple of cross-country meets there.
Oh, I agree.
This year.
I agree.
Use the whole area in there. Alright, any other questions? Do you have anything to add on what you mentioned? Alright, since you leave, we're going to ask some questions about it.
Call me, I'll answer.
Alright, the time now is seven fifty-four, and I enjoy the call us into closed session under section code five five one, point zero seven four, and that's personnel matters.
Bye, everybody. Nice seeing you.